Before, welcome everybody here. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Remco Brahm for, to lead us, our chaplain, to lead us in invocation.
Please join me in prayer. Almighty God, we turn our hearts heavenward for a moment to give you thanks for all the things that we enjoy. We have an abundance of food. We have great medical and dental care. We have great schools, safety, a beautiful environment, and every creature comfort that we can think of. And we don't take that for granted. And so, we say thank you tonight for giving us this place to love and, to live in and to enjoy. We thank you too that you are an abundant supplier of divine wisdom and grace and strength. And we ask tonight that you would lavish that on the City Council and the mayor, as well as on the staff that is present to administer the affairs of this city. We ask that you give safety and blessing to those that serve the city on the day-to-day basis. The police officers that are patrolling the streets even as we speak, the firefighters in their stations, and the city workers that come to the office and to their place of work every day to think of ways to safeguard and improve the quality of life that we already enjoy. And so, we give you thanks and commit this meeting into your hands. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Just again, want to welcome everybody here. I've got Nate up here helping me out tonight, so he's going to help us. So, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, March 3rd, 2014, to order. And if the city clerk would please call roll and make any general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the March 3rd, 2014, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. City Council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Luckwin.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
For the record, councilmembers Bill Lusk and Bert Hewitt are absent and traveling. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'm gonna, we're gonna have Nate lead us in our pledge tonight.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir. And I'm gonna ask you to sit up here since we've got a short meeting, Nate. If you're all right with that, you can, let's finish up. The city clerk, which would please call the next item, which is approval of the agenda.
Our next item is approval of meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 14-053.
Okay. Does anybody have anything or does staff have anything that they'd like to change or alter on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have an executive session to discuss land acquisition.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mayor, I move we approve the agenda as presented with the addition of a executive session to discuss land acquisition.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Joe Longoria, second by Councilmember Koontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, city, do we have any public comment tonight?
We do not, sir.
Okay. But I'm not going to read the rules on public comment. If we could move on to the consent agenda, if you wouldn't mind read those items.
Our first item is approval of the February 10th, 2014 work session meeting minutes. Agenda item number 14-054. Next, approval of the February 19th, 2014, regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 14-055. Third, we have approval of a right-of-way mowing and maintenance agreement by and between the Georgia Department of Transportation and the City of Milton for the area around the Welcome to Milton Gateway sign at State Route 9 at Webb Road. Agenda item number 14-056. Our next consent agenda item is approval of an indemnity agreement by and between the Georgia Department of Transportation and the City of Milton grantee to obtain gateway grant funding for landscape and beautification of State Route 9 at Webb Road around the Welcome to Milton Gateway sign. Agenda item number 14-057. Next, approval of a memorandum of agreement by and between the Georgia Department of Transportation and the City of Milton grantee to obtain gateway grant funding for landscape and beautification of State Route 9 at Webb Road, 372 at Blue Valley, and 372 at Green Road around the Welcome to Milton Gateway signs. Agenda item number 14-058. Our sixth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of the following subdivision plats. Glen Haven subdivision, subdivision plat, parcel subdivided into 24 lots. Next, Brayburn Phase 4, final plat revision, add units T-21 to T-24. This is Agenda Item Number 14-059.
Okay. And just for the record, to explain to Nate, basically, we have a consent agenda. The items that our city clerk read off are just general business items of the city or minor things that, basically, we're not discussing them one-on-one. We're, we're just confirming those by taking a vote that we agree with them. If there was something on there that the council, the mayor didn't agree with, we would pull that out and possibly discuss it. But it's just kind of a simple process. That's why the city clerk reads them. And now, I'll ask for a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Morick, second. Councilmember Thurman, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. So, all right, we don't have any reports and presentations tonight, so we'll move on to our first presentation items. And again, I'll explain for Nate's benefit, a first presentation is just a reading under the record of an item that we're going to actually make a vote on at our next scheduled meeting. But this just puts it on the record and so that people know that at a later date, we're going to discuss and, and vote on these items.
Our first item is consideration of RZ 1320-16340 Birmingham Highway with additional frontage on New Bullpen Road containing a total of approximately 66.40 acres by Christopher Perry to rezone from AG1 agricultural to CUP community unit plan to develop 52 single-family residences. Agenda item number 14-060. Our next first presentation item, consideration of RZ 1321-975 Birmingham Road and 15755 Birmingham Highway containing a total of 22.3 acres by Acadia Homes and Neighborhoods LLC to rezone from MIX mixed-use and AG1 agricultural to CUP community unit plan to develop 55 single-family residences. Agenda item number 14-061. Next, consideration of ZM 1401-13660 New Providence Road, Mills Springs Academy to modify the site plan submitted on November 5th, 1996 to revise site plan submitted on February 4th, 2014. This is Agenda Item Number 14-062. Our final first presentation item this evening is consideration of an ordinance to adopt amendments to the fiscal 2014 budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, amending the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, amending several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. This is Agenda Item Number 14-063.
Okay. And again, just, again, these, the clerk has read these items, and that way, it's on the record, it's published, so that our public knows that in two weeks, we'll be actually discussing the documents, and that's, we call it the first presentation. So, I'll ask for a motion to approve the first presentation items.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the first presentation items as read by staff.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Koontz, second by Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion hearing or any dissenting hearing, none. It's, that passes unanimous. So, and again, tonight's a relatively short meeting. We have no public hearings or zoning, unfinished or new business, so I will open up for any reports. Does the council have anything they want to discuss or report on? And if not, I'll open up to staff.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I've got a couple of updates for you tonight. I want to introduce here in a minute the team that is with us from ICMA working on, as you know, green space preservation, what we're terming a playbook, but the different options that go along with green space preservation. So, I'll introduce them here in a second. But before I do that, I want to bring your attention to next week's work session. Couple of things I'd like you to do in preparation for that work session. Item number one, really no preparation for. Item number two, we're trying to get to a decision point if we're going to talk about impact fees. We're trying to get to a decision of the seven criteria or seven, seven public facilities that are allowed for in law that impact fees can be used for. What we're trying to get to is at the end of the discussion, which one of those seven the council might have interest in pursuing. It will cause us to write an RFP very differently and presumably save a bunch of costs on the front end if we know that we're specifically focused on only two of the seven. That's a whole lot better of a, of an RFP to write than to say, we just want some component of all seven. I will email you tomorrow with the list of the seven. It's also available in, I was trying to do it while I was here, it's also available in Georgia law. If you do a quick Google search on impact fee categories, Georgia, you'll get all sorts of different options. It's found in the law at section 36-71-1. But I'll email that to you tomorrow. That's what I'm looking for, is for us to have a discussion next Monday that maybe we come out of the back end and say, okay, we're interested in parks and green space preservation and public facilities. Or we're interested in parks and green space preservation and stormwater roads, you know, infrastructure type stuff. But if we can hone in on what we're actually, the categories we're interested in, that would be success next Monday night. Also, on the agenda you just, just adopted tonight, there was a first presentation was the consideration of the budget amendments for this large mid-year amendment because of the additional revenues. If you'd spend some time digesting that in the next two weeks, and please forward any questions you have along to me, the sooner the better, so that we can potentially get them answered prior to the meeting, that would, that would help. It is a fairly bulky document, so it's going to take more than just the night before to read it and digest it. But that's two weeks out. And I also want to bring your attention to item number three on the work session for next week, discussion, discussion of parcel acreage change analysis. I highlight that because I was trying to figure out what to call this, and that sounds like some great planning terms. Essentially, what this does is, is start a discussion along the lines of what did Milton look like in 2000, what did it look like in 2010, and what does it look like now in 2014 as the different acreages and parcels have changed over time. I think that's, Rick, what you were asking for earlier today and a message I got from you. The stuff's ready, we just didn't have it published for tonight, so we're, we're good to go. We're actually rolling it out so that we can do it publicly with all the council in the same place. But we'll have several different maps to look at, several different visualizations as to how Milton has evolved since 2010, or since 2000, in 2010 and now into 2014. And I think you'll, should spark a really good discussion and some really good visuals as to what we had versus what we have versus what we hope to have in the future. And so, that probably leads well into an introduction here of the four members of the team that are with us. This is a group that has traveled from all parts of the United States. They were here all day today, they'll be here all day tomorrow. They've already put about a month's worth of research into this prior to coming to Milton. They're getting a sense of Milton, interviewing folks, interviewing stakeholders, getting a sense of the lay of the land. And they will then put some more work into it over the next couple of months before they provide us with their deliverable, which will ultimately be just the different and many and assorted ways of protecting green space, even ways we know about, just to affirm that those are in fact readily accepted and good, good professional ways of protecting green space. So, without further ado, the, the team leader, I'll introduce them, and then if any of them have anything to say, I'll certainly turn the microphone over to them. But our, our team leader in this case is Jason Glidden. Jason comes from Park City, Utah, where he serves as the Economic Development Manager. And he's participated in a variety of projects, including strategic planning, economic development, organizational development, budget preparations, and all that good stuff. So, he's our team lead. He's supported by Andrew Flanagan from Arlington, Massachusetts. Andrew's the deputy town manager in Arlington, just outside of Boston. Further supported by Autumn Monahan, who is the Communications Manager in the city of Issaquah, Washington, just outside of Seattle. And last, but certainly not least, Mark Roethert, I guess. I haven't called him anything but Mark yet, so.
Did you get it right?
Great. Coming with a logger blume. I always take last name challenges when given them. He comes from Peoria County, Illinois, where he also is engaged in their economic development. So, you can see we've got a great cross-section from the West Coast to kind of the Middle America to the Midwest to the East Coast. So, we've got a great cross-section of very intelligent people that we dropped on this project very quickly and who are going to give us a good, a good product on the back end. So, would any of y'all like to? Come on up, Jason. As a team lead, you get the microphone.
We just wanted to thank you for giving us the opportunity to work on this. We're excited. We've had only 24 hours here in Milton, but it's beautiful, and we're excited to see some more of it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys for being here, and we appreciate your work.
They'll be back in May-ish. I think it's May-ish, early June? June? Early June. And we'll have a deliverable to, to work from at that point. So, just one of another of the many assortment of tools that we're starting to put together to deal with Milton's reality in 2014.
Okay.
That's all I have. Mr. Mayor?
All right. All right. And before, as we added by motion and vote, an executive session, just for Nate and anybody else in the office, in the audience's information, we're, as elected officials and, you know, any, from local elected officials to any politicians throughout the state or the government, we are, we have to make all of our decisions and discussions on anything that has to do with the city business or taxpayer dollars or whatever. We have to do that in a public forum so that everybody can hear and it's all out in the open. And it's all on the record, it's all taped. The only time that we can actually speak about any set of city item behind closed doors, if you want to call it, or that is not in a public meeting, and that's to discuss just a few things. And that's one, if it happened to be a personnel or an employee issue or land acquisition, which was what we're going to talk about tonight, if we were trying to buy or sell a piece of land, personnel land, what else?
Litigation.
Litigation, if there's a lawsuit. The only reason, because if any of those things, if you were discussing that in the public, then it would be hard to keep that information quiet. If you're talking about buying a piece of land and it's in the public, then the person that's selling it may want to raise their price or whatever, or if it's a confidential item with employment. So, we're, under those few things, under the guidance of our lawyer, we can go back and discuss an item, but we can't make a decision on it. Then when we come to a decision, we have to come out and discuss it and vote in public. But that's the reason for, for this one. We're going to talk about a piece of property. We'll go back behind and meet there, and then later, as we make a decision, we'll come out and we'll, we'll discuss it in public. But, so, and other than that, that's about the end of this meeting. So, after that, we'll adjourn the meeting. But thank you for being here tonight, and thanks for your help doing the Pledge of Allegiance. So, do I have a motion to move into executive session to discuss land acquisition? Got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.[1118.42]
Unanimous.
Reconvene.
So moves.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.